Good evening, everyone, and welcome to council. What a beautiful Easter weekend it was here in St. Thomas, Ontario. I'm not sure we could ask for better. We won't make fun of councillor Herbert. For being away when the weather is so good here. This is a this is. This is the sixteenth meeting of the one hundred and forty-third Council of the Corporation of the City of St. Thomas, and we welcome you all tonight. And the first thing is any disclosures of interest from any of the members. Seeing none, we'll move on to minutes.
Have motion that the minutes of the meeting held on March the twentieth twenty twenty-three be confirmed? Moved by councillor Peters, seconded by councillor Clark.
Great. Further discussion or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? That's carried.
Council will now resolve itself into committee the whole to deal with the following business. First committee this evening is strategic direction and development. First item relates to a proposed official plan and zoning bylaw amendment for hospice of Algen at eight South Edgeware Road. I've motion that report PD oh eight twenty-three relating to the proposed official plan and zoning bylaw amendments for hospice of Algen. Be received for information and for the council authorized staff to prepare site-specific draft amendments to the St. Thomas official plan and zoning bylaw fifty-eighty-eight to permit a hospice facility on lands described as part of lot four range one south of Edgeware Road. Now in the city of St. Thomas and further that public meeting be scheduled for May fifteenth twenty twenty-three at six P M. In accordance with Ontario regulations five forty-three slash oh six and five forty-five slash oh six as amended. Moved by councillor Baldwin Sands, seconded by councillor Kohler.
Great. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the report. That's carried. Thank you.
Next item relates to community improvement project for the property of fifty Manitoba Street. I've motion that report PD twelve twenty-three relating to a community improvement project by Alexander Kershner for fifty Manitoba Street be received for information. And for the council approve a community improvement residential grant for application twenty twenty-three dash one twenty-three as submitted by Alexander Kushner for fifty Manitoba Street. Moved by councillor Wookiee, seconded by councillor Gibson.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
Next item is a community improvement plan project for the property at twenty-one Kane Street. I've motion that report PD thirteen twenty-three relating to a community improvement project by the Young Women's Christian Association of St. Thomas for twenty-one Kane Street be received for information. And for the council approve a community improvement residential grant and planning and building fees grant for application twenty twenty-three dash one twenty-five as submitted by the Young Women's Christian Association of St. Thomas for twenty-one Kane Street. Moved by councillor Clark, seconded by councillor Gibson.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
Next item relates to community improvement plan project residential grant and planning and building fees grant for the property at five seventy-one Talbot Street. I've motion that report PD sixteen twenty-three relating to the community improvement program residential grant and planning and building fees grant for five seventy-one Talbot Street be received for information. And for the council direct that a bylaw be prepared to enter into a community improvement program grant acknowledgement agreement with Harrison Cole relating to C I P application twenty twenty-one dash one eighteen. Moved by councillor Wookiee, seconded by councillor Gibson.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? That's carried.
Next item relates to a community improvement plan project for the property at four oh eight Talbot Street. I have a motion that report PD fifteen twenty-three relating to the community improvement project by two three one oh six eight five Ontario Inc. for four oh eight Talbot Street. Be received for information and for the council approve a residential grant and loan heritage facade and building improvement grant and loan, development charge grant, tax increment grant, heritage design grant and planning and building fees grant for application twenty twenty-three dash one twenty-six as submitted by two three one oh six eight five Ontario Inc. For four oh eight Talbot Street and for the council direct that a bylaw be prepared to enter into a residential loan agreement with two three ones zero six eight five Ontario Inc. Relating to the C I P project at four oh eight Talbot Street and for the council direct that a bylaw be prepared to enter into a heritage facade and building improvement loan agreement with two three ones zero six eight five Ontario Inc. Relating to the C I P project at four oh eight Talbot Street. Moved by councillor Wookiee, seconded by councillor Gibson.
Questions or comments? Councillor Peters.
Thanks, your worship. Not specifically with this in front of us, but I'd be curious if staff keeps a running tally of how many units this program has created. You know, it's increments of one or six, but it they all start to add up. And I'm not necessarily looking for an answer tonight, but I think it would be good to know and engage how successful the program has been. Thanks.
Mr. Pompili, if you if you have it tonight, great. If not, we'll be happy for you to come back and tell us the sum total. I guess you you're coming to tell us now.
No, through through you, sir. That's a great question, and that's a good stats to kind to have to kind of show how successful, how how whether the whether the the program is working. So it's something that we can certainly report back on. Yeah. Be happy to do that.
Thank you. Further questions or comments? Councillor Kohler.
You know, I think the program encompasses a lot of things, too. So I think just the whole program, because you can see the the success of it from implementation and how how it's picking up and the improvements that it's making all through that. So any other stats can be put towards it. I know the the tax generation is hard to hard to come up with that, but there it's it's been a success in the it's visual even, and I think it it'll just help promote the program even more and then see if it needs any more investment in it.
Thank you. Councillor Wookiee.
Thanks, your worship. I have a process question, I guess, for Mr. Pompili, but in this in this, when somebody proposes five units on a second floor that wasn't wasn't residential before, at what point does the fires department? Do they do they take a look at this and like, when did they get involved like this? Did they do we communicate with them later? Because obviously you're going to the development is going to adhere to fire code, but at what point does fire find out that this is happening so that they know that they need to serve this as a residential residential unit? So I'm just wondering how that process works for us. Thanks.
Yeah, the 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 fire department would be notified as part of the the building permit application. So the the process would would first start with the building permit application being made. Fire would have their opportunity to review those plans and offer any input through that process in terms of ensuring that the the not only the building code requirements are met, but the fire code requirements are met. And it's after that process that then the C I P process would kick in.
Okay, go ahead.
And then just another one. So once the rentals are done, does the does if inspector come out? Like, does fire come out before people are in? Or do we do they say, okay, well, we assume that this has all been followed? Or is that a building inspector that goes out to make sure that this is happening? I just was I'm just curious about. I I, you know, the fire wants to know how we're going to get in and out of there and all those kind of things. So could you just refresh me on? Once it's built, what happens before people move in?
Yep, through you, Mr. Another another good question. The occupancy to the unit wouldn't be issued until final inspections are done. And those inspections do include inspections from fire as well or sign offs from fire.
Further questions or comments? Great questions tonight on C I P. On the report? All those in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
A last item under on the agenda under this committee is a notice of a public meeting regarding a minor variance to take place on April thirteenth at ten A M. And the minor variance is by Wallace Residential Home to recognize that nineteen people live in the existing group home, whereas the limit is not more than ten residents. And also the minor variance is to facilitate the construction of an addition to the east side of the existing building at three sixty-nine Wellington Street. I worship unless the members have any further.
Councillor Peters.
Thanks, your worship. When I I read this and it and it troubled me because I'm curious, I'd be interested to know how long this has been going on. I, you know, I know the 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 building. We've had, but to to think that people may have been for a period of time living in a in a manner that wasn't necessarily approved by the city. It just it it just troubles me and that, you know, here we are, somebody's identified the problem and you know, now we're going to make changes as they beg for forgiveness.
Sure. Question or no? Okay.
I worship if there's no further items under strategic direction and development. We'll now move into community engagement and services and nothing on the agenda at this time unless there are any items from the members. And seeing none, we'll now move into infrastructure and civic operations. A first item relates to the keeping of backyard hens and chickens. I have a motion that report PD ten twenty-three twenty twenty-three relating to the keeping of backyard hens and chickens be received for information. Moved by councillor Wookiee, seconded by councillor McCauley.
Questions or comments? Councillor McCauley.
I just want to thank you for the in-depth report. I found it really helpful. I've had a lot of anecdotal feedback on this from several residents, and it is a fifty fifty split. It is either very much in support of it or very much against it. Reading the port I found helpful, the backyard hands report and twenty-six cities and towns across Ontario allow residential chickens. They list the benefits, which are many, you know, hens as recyclers, education and food source, pest control and disease reduction. It also states many of the Ontario communities receive very few complaints. They're mainly due to licensing. And it was interesting that Ontario Ministry of Agriculture or Rural Affairs provides, you know, some resources for backyard chickens and the Canadian Food Inspection also provides information on biosecurity tips to keep the birds healthy. For me, I would lean towards a pilot, but I don't feel that I can make that decision until I have a good understanding of what that pilot would look like. And so my recommendation would be that we have staff put together regulations and come back and make a approve regulations for a for a pilot. Make that motion.
Thank you. Councillor Baldwin Sands.
Thank you very much to councillor McCauley for those comments. I would also like to thank Mr. McCune for this report and point out the addition of the John and Kelly Niffen dispelling the mess about backyard chickens. I have spent a number of years being a a producer. I've not currently, but I do have a fondness for being able to collect eggs. And I can say that it is an increasingly growing trend. The food security issue becomes top of mind for me. It's a great teaching tool for where your food comes from and how it is grown. The work involved is very, very minimal, and the commitment is minimal. It also really emphasizes the greening of our economy and the greening of our environment. It brings back to mind victory gardens. And if anyone here remembers the sixties, every family on our street had fruit trees in the backyard. They had vegetables growing and a root cellar that was always full of freezing and canning. But there were a few houses that I can recall that had chickens and ducks also in their backyard. So I understand there is a returning trend to that because they are better tasting. They are so much better for baking. If anybody knows how to make a very, very good angel food cake, it's done with the freshest egg whites possible. Most grocery store eggs are at least three months old from the farm. And as I said, I remember not just those backyard hens, but in complete industries in people's backyards, including geese and quail. Again, new Canadians are coming to this community, and they are requesting. They also have done industrious backyards and gardens, and they have that focus. So I support also asking staff to come up with a report similar to Aurelia as is in this report of six to ten residents and in that requirement. And I really strongly agree that we need to have this have a second look by our staff and look at very, very similar program again to Aurelia. But I also do understand that fifty percent of councils are debating this very, very currently because of the upward trend. And fifty percent are saying a strong yes, and fifty percent are saying a strong no. So let's see what a report looks like for having six to ten possible residents doing the requirements as laid out in the report and bring that report back to us, members of council. Thank you.
Councillor Wookiee.
Thank you, worship. I'm also in favor of a test project, and I I agree with what my colleagues are saying. But I want to add on what I'd like to hear from staff in the follow-up report is. You know, like, I'm thinking about a bylaw enforcement officer's training. Backyard farms might not be part of it anymore. So actually, who's going to be doing the inspecting in in the city? And and do we need more training and 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 those kind of things? Because our bylaw officers obviously busy, we want them to be, you know, tied a lot by law. We want them to be out there looking at, and this is another thing for them to do. So I just want to look at it from the staffing side in both in terms of capacity and in terms of training for that, but I think six to ten and for a couple of years and see how it goes with. Obviously, staff will give us their idea of minimum lot sizes, et cetera, et cetera. Thank you.
You, councillor Baldwin Sands, back to you.
Thank you. I appreciate those comments by fellow councillor Wookiee. In addition, I really like what it also says in the report that you have to have the minimum lot size and that the neighbors have the ability to say no. So I think all of that needs to be brought together back to us as council and put in that comprehensive report.
Further questions? Councillor Clark.
Thanks, your worship. I guess I would be on the on the negative side. I think we're as a council trying to be problem solvers, not problem creators. And I just see this as a huge enforcement issue. The whole idea of of the food chain and stuff to me is just a red herring. The eggs are going to cost you two to four times what they would cost you if if you're buying them. You we've got the whole problem of viruses right now, predators. Just the whole the whole thing has changed in terms of urban living. The the size of lots that we had in the sixties and early seventies, those have diminished. If you look at the size of the lots in the neighborhoods that are being built now. And if you if you were to enforce what most of these other cities have got, and that's eight meters from your house with three meters from each of your neighbors and your back. There's very few, very few lots in the city that are going to be large enough to to house the chickens. We're in a northern climate with a lot of darkness in the in the wintertime. Hens don't tend to lay in those months. You have to renew the hens every two to three years. And to me, it's just a first step where people are then going to want to harvest the animals and and what's next? Goats, I don't know. So I I would be in favor of the status quo. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Herbert.
Thank you, your worship. I found the report very interesting to read. I I I really think in my mind, if if we're if we're going to be a progressive community when these type of things come up, I think there's lots of restrictions on it. And and there's a lot of guidelines. I I I I'm heading towards a trial period of as councillor Working and councillor Sanders said, six to ten people and take a look at it. It's obviously working in some communities. And I know councillor McCauley said it's a fifty fifty split. But I I I think sometimes we have to try it with the option that if it doesn't work, it doesn't work and have strict rules by law officers on top of it. And I I don't know, I I just think it's something we don't want to slam the door on me. I just think if we have an option to do it for six or eight people. And and I understand that if the neighbors don't want it, they don't get it, lots have to be big enough, have to be big enough. So I I I'm tending to leaning towards the option. So we'll just i- if it comes to a vote, I I I think maybe I would think more option. Let's give it a try. I I don't think we should not shut the door. That's all. So anyway, and anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Gibson.
Thank you, your worship. I was talking to the young lady that first approached us, and she was indicating that when she receives the chickens, they come in eggs and they hatch. And it's a company that brings them in. And they're only in on their property, I think she said about eight months. And then they're taken away and everything is given to her. The shelter is given to her, the chickens are the eggs are given to her to hatch. They have they they have a a business that comes in and picks up all the debris, like, you know, the manure from the chickens, because they just you just can't throw it in your grass. It has to be neutralized. So so I think maybe I'm I'm in favor of that kind of a situation, if that's what it's going to be. I would be in favor of that, but I definitely I would like to see the a proposal brought in and see like councillor McCauley was saying, I I kind of like to look at that. But anyway, just to let you know that that's what the lady was instructing about doing. Thank you, your worship.
Further, councillor Peters.
Thanks, your worship, and and thanks to staff for the comprehensive report. It was it was a very good read and and very well researched. And, you know, I know I made some comments at the initial meeting of some concerns, and I still have a lot of concerns of, you know, avian influenza and the impact that that potentially could have. But at at the same time, I I I was reassured when I read the fact that a former ministry that I was involved in, Ministry of Ag Food and Rural Affairs is supportive of this and that they've actually written guidelines that the Canadian Food Inspection Agency has stepped forward. They the ultimate agency that regulates our food. I'm will I am prepared to support a pilot project to see if how this works. But I I think if it's if we're having a lot of issues and we're we're going to need to pull the plug on it in time, but I'm prepared to take that next step and and let's give this a try.
Councillor Kohler.
Thanks, your worship. When when the request first came forward, I thought it was like an easy yes and but with with the more communication that came to me and the more research that I've that I've done into it. I I I just look at this as opening up a huge can of worms for us and and staff. And I I I think there's a reason, you know, we have zoning in place to to regulate certain things. And I think this is, for instance, right here as to us that we're living within the city boundaries, and there's some people that would like to do this, and there's other people that live in the city for a different reason, right, and and want their their comfort. But, you know, looking at some of the the pros versus the cons, the cons just continue to grow. And I'm not so much worried about the food safety. I think people are going to do it, but it's all the other anomalies that councillor Gibson talked about. You're you're going to have some responsible owners, and you're going to have some irresponsible owners. And unfortunately, that's where that's what's going to cause the problem for city staff and and for for us and and other people that are going to be forced to live live next to this. And, you know, as far as the trial process goes for myself, I I look at such a small sample, and if if we get some people that are responsible and at that time, and then we move forward with it. And then as it grows, it comes out of control and people are the other way around, then you're forced to take something away for somebody. So for for me, unfortunately, I can't support this because of, you know, the information that's been provided to me from especially the residents, because for me, it's been a little more than than fifty percent of the people that have responded to me the other way that I would not like to see it, which was kind of surprising to me. But like I said, the more research I did into it, the more that I seen and the more people that communicated with me certainly changed my outlook on on how I was first going to vote on this. I I certainly wouldn't be able to support going forward with this or a pilot project.
Councillor McCauley.
I would like to put forward a motion to proceed with staff going back and putting together pilot regulations and coming back to us with that report. One second.
Okay, emotions on the floor and not debatable, so.
Excuse me, your worship. We still have the first motion to deal with to receive the report.
We have to defeat it first?
This is just to receive the report moved by councillor Wookiee, seconded by councillor McCauley. We have not yet.
Okay. It is to receive the report with no direction to staff.
That's correct, your worship. I can have another motion prepared. Moved by councillor McCauley, seconded by councillor Baldwin Sands, that council direct the preparation of a a pilot project.
Okay. So on the first motion to receive the first report. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? That's carried. So we've received the report. Now there's a second motion on the floor for a pilot project and the writing of regulations. Is that what you're what? Maybe the clerk wants to give us that in official language.
I worship. Can set it up that council direct the preparation of a pilot project report relating to the keeping of backyard hens and chickens, if that is fine with both mover and secondary. Thank you.
Okay. On this motion, questions, comments? All been done? Right. Then all those in favor? I count five. Sorry, it's six with councillor Herbert. Sorry, seven with councillor Herbert, so that carries. So we're asking for a report back on a pilot project. Okay?
Thank you. The next item relates to Water Tower Line Mountain Bike Network update. I have a motion that report PR oh one twenty-three relating to the Water Tower Mountain Bike Network update be received for information. Moved by councillor Baldwin Sands, seconded by councillor McCauley.
Questions or comments on that report? Councillor councillor Wookiee.
Thank you very much, your worship. Anything that gets people outside and active, I just think is a wonderful thing, and I don't know if I want to risk a separated shoulder out there, but I'm sure, you know, I might give it a roll. But I'm thanks very much to this volunteer organization in De Parx for doing this. It takes an area that was frankly underused and makes it into something that's going to provide activity for people for a long, long time. So thanks to staff and thanks to the Water Tower Mountain Bike Trail Network.
Great. Further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carry.
Next item relates to the twenty twenty-three road rehabilitation tender award. I've motion that report ES eighteen twenty-three relating to the twenty twenty-three road rehabilitation tender award for various locations be received for information. And further that the tender submitted by J R Excavating Limited in the amount of one million eight hundred and fifty-five thousand eight hundred and ninety-three dollars and seventy-five cents excluding H S T be accepted. Moved by councillor Wookiee, seconded by councillor Clark.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? That's carried.
Next item relates to blue box transition to producer responsibility. An agreement relating to Circular Materials Ontario have a motion that report ES nineteen twenty-three relating to the blue box transition to producer responsibilities. Circular Materials Ontario Agreement be received and for the council direct that a bylaw be prepared to authorize the execution of the agreement between Circular Materials Ontario for the city to act as service provider. Moved by councillor Baldwin Sands, seconded by councillor Gibson.
Questions or comments? I saw councillor Peters first and then councillor Baldwin Sands.
Thanks very much, your worship. I'm hoping that staff can add some insight into page sixty-five on the agenda, the ineligible sources. And what happens to three hundred and fifty properties in two thousand and twenty-six? So these are properties that are currently taking advantage of recycling programs. And I'm assuming that this is the the way I read the report, that the city's been paying to pick up their recyclables, yet suddenly three hundred and fifty properties are going to be without that service in two thousand and twenty-six, and they have to engage a private contractor. Am I reading that correctly? In twenty twenty-six and they have to engage a private contractor. Am I reading that correctly?
Please. Help us.
Thank you, your worship, uh through you, Counsel Peters. So, uh, yes, you're reading that correctly as right now, uh, in twenty twenty-six, those properties may not be eligible. We're still kind of uh from our conversations with C M O, there could be a possibility that they still may. Collect those at that time. At this point right now, they are not gonna be collecting. We went back and looked at some of those costs, what they would be to. Still provide the level of service that we currently are providing to those residents. It'd be around. Uh, I think Michelle said over twenty thousand dollars per year if we wanted to keep that same level of service provided now, but we'd be paying for that collection at this time.
So then all along, but we have been so we've been subsidizing that as municipality. Since the blue box, since the inception of. The Blue Box Program in in our community.
We have been uh, we have been paying for that uh that collection to date and we have been getting some, we have been getting revenue back on those materials as they've been. Collected and processed, yes, on both the individual pickups and as well as some of those properties that will become ineligible, yes.
Well, I I think, your worship, uh, I noticed that there's lots of money allocated for promotion, et cetera, so we can do a better job of what we put into our blue boxes, but. Um, I think someone better get out in front of this one very quickly, you know, that's three years away. Um, and I would like to have staff report back to us as this is this deadline draws a little closer to. See what those actual costs might be at that time, but um. Um, I just want to flag. That ineligible sources. Thank you.
Counsel Baldwin Sands.
Thank you. In our local fight against climate change, I applaud this issue and I really truly thank you for this report and. Thank Michelle for putting it together and using the word circular economy. Um, I understand that this is located at the city of London's. Uh, conveyor bit service. I was wondering, I have toured the facility. I don't know how many of my fellow counselors have toured the facility. How will things change there for our garbage? I think it's incredibly interesting what they are doing and how they are enhancing. The energy savings, the the way that we're able to collect and reuse. Um, so I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about the changes that. Will happen with this um. Type of initiative coming forward.
Uh, through your worship to Counsel Baldwin Sands, from my understanding of it, so C M O will be entering into an agreement with uh the MRF, the uh. Municipal Recycling Facility to be a collection point for all the recyclable materials, so they'll keep the new operations and be. Being compensated as per whatever their agreement is uh with with C M O to keep those materials uh coming in and being processed with them. So.
Go ahead, Counsel Baldwin Sands.
I'll take that was where I was going. Um, but the leadership role that the city has taken in order to make this happen, I certainly do applaud that. And is there cost savings associated with this for the city? Could you talk a little bit about that, please?
Yes, yeah, um, again, through your worship. Um, so the anticipated cost savings would be around five hundred thousand dollars per year for our operating budget.
Excellent. Counsel McCauley.
Uh, thank you for the report. If we have been subsidizing this all along and we're going to be saving five hundred thousand dollars. And the anticipated cost to continue the service is approximately twenty thousand dollars, wouldn't we just continue it?
Through your worship, uh, not exactly sure um. Appropriate answer to give you at this time for that though, but all I know is that right now we are going to be uh. Yeah.
That's okay, you can come back to me. And and maybe there's downfalls that that we're not aware of, so maybe you could come back to us with that, because to me, I just like if we're already subsidizing it, we're making some savings. It just seems like. Um, also, in the uh ineligible sources, the downtown. Area was included in the ineligible sources and I just wonder, like, considering the beautifying of the downtown and some of the. You know, social challenges in our downtown, like, is there something that we want to do as a city to ensure that that. Um, continues in our downtown, you know, otherwise business owners or. The Downtown Development Board are the ones who are picking up the tab if they wish to continue this.
Um, that's definitely something uh, through your worship, it's definitely something we can come back to council at a closer get to that deadline. Like I said, uh, like I mentioned previously too. Um, uh, with our discussion, C M O, it's not like they they may still continue collecting these three hundred and fifty types of properties and everything like that. With the agreement we have in place, we're not a hundred percent sure on that yet, but from the indication right now, we're proceeding as if they won't. But when we get close to that time, we can come back with a more fulsome report to to uh council to outline what our options are at that time.
Thank you.
Great. Further questions or comments? First of all, love the sa- love the amount of increased revenue. Thank you. That's 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 very good. All those in favor? Any opposed? Carry.
Next item relates to speed control on newly assumed roads. Around McNeil Line, Yarmouth Center Road and Edgeware Line. Have motion that report E S twenty-one twenty-three relating to speed control on these newly assumed roads. Be received for information and further the council direct that a bylaw be prepared for its consideration to amend by law forty-five dash eighty-nine. Moved by Counsel Wookiee, seconded by Counsel Clark.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carry.
Next item relates to uh Highbury Avenue, South Edgeware Road Class Environmental Assessment and Increase in Engineering Fees. Have a motion that report E S seventeen twenty-three relating to the increase in engineering fees be received for information. And further that as per the city's purchasing bylaw, council authorized an increase of one million one hundred and twenty-six thousand. Six hundred and eighty-six dollars excluding H S T and engineering fees. Uh, for R V Anderson Associates Limited uh in relation to R F P number twenty-two-two dash oh twenty-five. Moved by Counsel Wookiee, seconded by Counsel Gibson.
Questions or comments? Counsel Peters.
Thanks, your worship. Um, it it's it's not so much with specifically with this. And it's not regarding the next report that we're going to be engaging, but. Um, you know, over the next few years, we're gonna be s- investing significant sums of money in in infrastructure. To help to support this project and I'm. A hundred percent behind that. But how do we ensure? That, you know, we have our own ten-year plan, Justin, of, you know, roads we're gonna fix, undergrounds we're gonna do. How, and and this may be not looking necessarily for the answer tonight, because I'm, it's gonna be financial details too. But how do we ensure that we? We make the strategic investments that we need to make for this project? Yet at the same time, we're not taking away from. Other important strategic investments that we're we're making in the community and. Probably it's gonna be a budget discussion, you know, but twenty twenty-four budget discussion, but I just plant that seed and that we we can't. Uh, yeah, we need to do everything we can for this, but we've also got to think about. The rest of the community too.
Mr. Lawrence.
Uh, it's a great point, very pertinent. Um, all of the the plans change a little bit. So uh, a road plan, a water plan, sewer plan, um, development plan, even um. Community objectives, uh, strategy, everything changes a little bit, and so I think it's uh, it's. Uh, staff that will need to lead a process that will take counsel through uh a new visioning exercise, basically, that and you'll adjust. Um, what the objectives are over the next decade. It's a good point. Uh, the secondary effect is that affects tender prices. Uh, so if you're if you're building, you know, significantly more, it can alter the prices that you get for contracts.
Further questions or comments? You're sorry, go ahead, Counsel Peters.
So the question is gonna get asked by the public, I'm I'm sure. Because we've in this, we talk about four-laning of Highbury between Ron McNeil and South A- South Edgeware. Who will deal with any considerations of Highbury north? Of uh Ron McNeil is is that eh? Is that? We're gonna leave that in Central Algen Sands, County of Algen Hands. It it also involves the city of London, but we, I think we all know. We hear about Highbury enough as it is. Um, we're gonna hear more about Highbury, so. How how does that get? Um, reviewed?
Sir Lawrence.
Thanks. Yeah, so there was the traffic study completed and updated recently. Uh, to basically look at the projected volumes that will be uh due to industrial development, also due to background growth between St. Thomas and London. Uh, the prediction is that the road remains within capacity uh in the design forecast. Um, however, if there's an interest in upsizing that road, it would technically be County of Elgin uh and and fifty fifty. Uh, with City of London, because those are the those are the owners in theory of that road. But the traffic study in the short term suggests that there's no capacity increase needed north of Ron McNeil.
Counselor Baldwin Sands.
This is. Uh. Directed at you, if I could, Mr. Lawrence. Right along that whole Ketchman area, and I know that this is about the delivery of certain infrastructure services, but I'm also looking at the map on the right-hand side of figure two. And I'm wondering how if there is going to be any impact to the Tall Grass Prairie. Um, project on the side of the Highbury on the west side. And it was done by Kellifree Conservation Authority and uh T D Environmental Trust. And I know that you're talking about um. Increasing some of the services, but is there going to be any impact to those areas that have been? Developed with K C C A, et cetera. You're right on the fringe of that.
Mr. Lawrence, can you help us with that?
Sure. Uh, one of the first steps is to identify all the natural areas, um, all the way along the corridor. Uh, and that, of course, is one that we know about. Um, then the objective is to look at solutions that um balance. You know, the 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 needs for new traffic lanes without impacting socially, environmentally. Um, and and so we will look for solutions that don't impact that. Uh, initially, our our thought is that there is no. Uh, impact, and if any, very minor. Um, so we shouldn't need to widen much into that area where you're talking about.
Thank you. Further questions or comments? Counsel Clark.
Thank you through you to Mr. Lawrence. Um, going further uh east and and not showing on the map is the um. Yarmouth Center Road and we received some correspondence with concerns about future development there and the um. The trees, the wind. Um, the wind block. Is is there any um? Any plans at this point in the project for anything, any changes on that road?
Mr. Lawrence.
Uh, on Yarmouth Center Road, there are no uh, no predicted or planned uh changes. Uh, so the row of trees that you're speaking about on the east side of the road uh should be fine. Um, there's a possibility to look at some of the intersections themselves to see what kind of stop control or signal control is needed. But there should be no impact to the uh, the adjacent property owners on the other side. Possibly, you know, many decades from now if some future council decides, but uh, nothing at this point.
Further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? That's carried.
Next item relates to the Industrial Development, a subdivision development consultants award. I have motion that report E S twenty-two twenty-three relating to the Industrial Subdivision Development Consulting Award. Be received for information and further that I B I Group Inc. be authorized. To carry out engineering and planning services in the amount of seven million nine hundred and forty-three thousand seven hundred and sixty-four dollars and twelve cents. Excluding H S T in accordance with the city's purchasing bylaw. Moved by Counsel Clark. Seconded by Counsel Wookiee.
Questions or comments? Counsel Wookiee.
Thanks, your worship. Um. For the public, like, this is one of those ones where we're we're hiring, uh, we were proposing to hire a company kind of single source. And have this not go up for tender. But they have the background. That in the end saves us money, so I just want to be clear to the public that. Um, for for a seven million dollar project, you might want to do it differently, but with this company, it seems to me like they've got the. They've got the background that we need uh to get this done, so I just want to be clear and transparent with the public that it's my understanding that's kind of what's happening. But um. In this case, it's warranted, in my opinion. Thank you.
Further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? That's carried.
Next item relates to delegated approval uh to the Executive Director of Industrial Development. Have motion that report A D M eleven twenty-three relating to the delegated approval be received for information. And for the council authorized preparation of a bylaw to delegate signing authority to the position of Executive Director Industrial Development. Moved by Counsel Baldwin Sands. A second by Counsel Gibson.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, oh, sorry, Counsel Clark.
I'm just a question. I'm not sure if I missed it. Is there any limits on the um? On the size of the contracts that.
Through you, your worship, to the members of council, at this point in time, we're looking at those numbers in terms of the delegated authority, the attached dollars. There's an administrative uh policy that we can establish. Anything uh we would tender as per our normal processes will come back here and and to be tendered.
Okay. Further questions? Comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carry.
Your worship, unless the members have any further items for this committee.
Ca- Counsel Clark.
Thanks, your worship. Uh, just one, I I was wondering if we could get a report at some point, and I know we had talked about it before on. City property that would be suitable for future subsidized housing. Um, I know we've been working on that and I've just wondered when that might come back to us.
I know we've had a number of discussions. City manager?
Thank you, worship, through you and the members of council. Absolutely, we are looking on, we're working on that. Um, we talk about it almost daily, I would suggest. Uh, in terms of what we own, what's available, what's in the community, um, what's shovel-ready? Uh, and shovel-ready is a, you know, a variable amount of. From zoned and ready to go to not, but we are working on on looking at that, um, especially as it relates to both. Uh, subsidized or affordable housing, but also housing more in general because of the need for housing across the entire uh city as well.
Go ahead, Counsel Clark.
Do we have a pro- a rough timeline then, when that would come back to us?
City manager?
Uh, I commit uh to before the end of the second quarter.
Okay. Further questions or comments or no, further additions to this committee? Seeing none?
Will now move into corporate governance and administration. First item relates to community grant applications. I have a motion that reports T R O eight twenty-three relating to community grant applications for March twenty twenty-three be received for information. And further, the council approved the community grant request from V O N. Uh, in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars and further, council approved the community grant request from C M H A Thames Valley. Addiction and Mental Health Services for one thousand four hundred and five dollars. Moved by Counsel Kohler, seconded by Counsel Gibson.
Questions or comments on the report? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carry.
Your worship, unless the members have any further items for corporate governance and administration.
Counsel Baldwin Sands.
Thank you. I have two items, if I may please. I'm wondering if the city has had any formal discussions with the management team or a project for Earth Day. And in addition, if there is anything planned for truth and reconciliation for the month of September.
Go to you, city manager.
Thank you, worship, uh, through you. Um, at this point in time, we are looking at the activities uh that we'll be planning for Earth Day and we can get back to council with respect to that. As it relates to truth and reconciliation, we will certainly um be celebrating again this year with with the support of the community and at their request. Um, the the challenge we will have this year is that our our area is um not available to us at this point in time. Um, and so we will. We will work around that and we'll figure out what that looks like and we'll get back to council about what that is looks like, but we also know that there are community stakeholders who'll want to participate as well.
Thank you.
Further, Counsel Peters?
Ju- just on that and perhaps maybe at next week's council meeting, um. We can get all the details, but I know there's a a citywide cleanup event planned for the twenty-second of April. Um, it's coming up. It's gonna be done in conjunction with the Elgin County Railroad Museum. They're gonna fill a railcar. So it might be good for you and your mayor's update, your worship, and, you know, as we get closer to just make sure it's up on the city website to uh. Um. Because with some of these wins we've had this year, it's done a number on blue boxes and there's a lot of trash uh out and about, so if we can all pitch in.
Well, we had to deliver those three hundred and sixty blue boxes to the people, never mind. Um. But yes, we're gonna cover it on New Business Night and on Mayor's Update tomorrow night, yes. Further a- additions to corporate governance and administration? Seeing none?
At this time, council reconvened into regular session. I have a motion that the recommendations, directions, and actions of council and committee in the whole as recorded in the minutes of this date be confirmed, ratified, and adopted. Moved by Counsel Baldwin Sands, second by Counsel Clark.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? That's carried.
Your worship, next we move into reports of committees. First committee is the first report of the twenty-twenty-three Site Plan Control Committee. I have motion that report PD eleven-twenty-three relating to site plan application numbers SPC one, SPC two, SPC three, and SPC four dash twenty-three be received for information. Moved by Counsel Wookiee, second by Counsel McCauley.
Questions or comments? Counsel Peters?
A lot of interesting projects in this report. Can anyone give us an update of sort of the future timeline of the new animal shelter now that the site plan is being approved? When we might see next steps, Jeff?
Looks like we get Mr. Bray tonight, too. Mr. Bray?
Thank you, Mayor Preston, through you to Counselor Peters. It's out for tender right now. It's closing next week. Actually, there's a week extension. There's been so much interest in it. We're hoping to break ground by June with a December completion date.
Great. Perfect news. Further questions? Sorry, that's not me. We're not there yet. On the, is there a report for that? Great. So then all in favor? Any opposed? Carry.
Next item relates to light and art installation at the LMPS station. I have a motion that at EDC, report EDC oh-one relating to light and art installation at the LMPS station be received for information. And further, that the proposal for the installation of the artistic light feature in the West Alley beside the LMPS station be supported pending review by the Public Art Committee. Moved by Counsel Baldwin Sands, second by Counsel Kohler.
Questions or comments? Counsel Peters?
So a very interesting-looking art project and look forward to seeing the finished results. I just wanted to make sure, though, because we do have residential units immediately to the west of that in the, above the Sunny's Hotel that we're confident that we're not going to cause any light interference with those, with those people, with those residents there.
Ms. Pickerskill, great to have you. Go ahead. Thank you. Further questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carry.
Next item relates to a downtown speaker system. I have a motion that report EDC oh-two-twenty-three relating to the downtown speaker system be received for information. And further, that permission be granted to allow the outdoor speakers to be affixed to the public infrastructure. I move by Counsel McCauley. Second by Counsel Wookiee.
Questions or comments? Counsel Peters?
Where's the master, your worship, where's the master control for this? Because and who's going to deal with the complaints that, you know, I don't want to hear rap music or rock and roll or country and western or Taylor Swift?
Hey, hey.
But you know, I, I just, I can just see one, one, one person's musical tastes
Right.
aren't necessarily everyone's musical tastes. And I just, how, how are you going to police this one?
So there are actually subscription services out there that are geared specifically for municipal soundscapes. And so we would subscribe through Railway City Tourism to one of those services. And we would be targeting, they would have pre-made playlists where it would just be sort of background, you know, elevator-type music for the most part. And so we wouldn't be even really selecting, and then we can switch it up. I think some examples I mentioned were Golden Oldies during nostalgia nights. We could have going Christmas music in December, that sort of thing. We can switch it up based on the seasons, and it's just as simple as using, you know, the app. And the main transmitter would be set at the tourism office, so we would be able to change that up. And I believe it's all, a lot is web-based, too, so we can even change it from elsewhere, but it would transmit out of the tourism office location.
Counselor Herbert, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you, worship. I, I would assume there's a time, time limit. You shut it down at eight o'clock at night or nine o'clock. It wouldn't go into midnight or one in the morning. I'm assuming there's a timed stoppage for it.
Yeah, absolutely. It would, yes, it would turn off at night. Yeah.
Now, the master microphone is still going to be in the mayor's office? I'm just kidding. I would do karaoke till eight o'clock. No? Okay. All right.
No.
Counsel Peters?
But your, your worship, it's actually, it's, it's a good point. And does this have the ability to be used as a public service of a lost, during nostalgia days of a lost child or something like that? So that it can be used for more than just playing music?
Yeah, absolutely. It does have an announcing capability. So, I mean, this, the sky's the limit with that. Some things I thought of was announcing train departure times from the LMPS station during nostalgia nights and other downtown events. We could announce if, you know, there's a downtown or even a community event happening, and we've, you know, we're open on Saturdays. We can just do announcements periodically throughout the day to say, oh, hey, head down to Pinafore Park because the Music and Arts Festival is on today, that sort of thing. Really, we have a ton of possibilities we could do with that.
Perfect. Counsel Wookiee?
Thanks, your worship. Just, I see ongoing operation and maintenance will be managed through Railway City Tourism. Um, I like this idea, but I look at this, I'm like, wow, stuff's going to happen to this, like, I'm, I'm just like, I'm a little bit scared about the maintenance budget on this one. And have you budgeted a certain amount for that, or have you said we're not going to go beyond this limit? Or how are you guys managing this? Because you know, it's, it's electronic devices and things happen. I mean, just, thanks.
So there's warranty on the products, but also, so this is being funded through Andrew Gunn Consulting. So that fund is, it has a limit to it. And so, but the, the thing about the system is it's modular, so you can kind of piece it together. And so if we lose one unit, it's not going to break the bank. They're, like, each unit is, you know, I can't remember the exact cost of each one, but it's something that we could replace if we had to. That being said, there is a warranty on the units, so that should cover us for a few years. And it'd be working with the manufacturer on any, any issues that crop up in terms of maintenance. Now, they are, there's a photo of them in the, in the report. And so they're quite high up on the, the poles, and so they would be almost impossible for anyone to reach. So we'd be looking at weather events that might impact it.
Counsel Clark?
I think, remember, going back to the old Locks Fair days in the grease pole, this will provide us a, a number of opportunities to make sure that they stay safe.
We're reminiscing today, aren't we? Excellent. Thank you. Further questions or comments?
Just on the Locks Fair, the, the sad part is, is we don't have one of Sean's, John Dyke's former predecessors around Shyne Palmer, because Shyne had this very distinctive get your red hot Coney Island hot dogs and your hot buttered popcorn. So I don't know if we can find Shyne's voice somewhere, but it was a good one.
We'll have a speaker to do this with now. Thank you. All in favor? Any opposed? Carry.
Hi, your worship. If we have no further items for this area, and it doesn't appear that we do, we'll now move into petitions and communications. First item relates to the St. Anne's Community Festival being held from June the seventh to tenth, twenty-twenty-three. We have several requests to deem the event as municipally significant to not object to temporary extension of liquor license and authorize use of the Joe Thornton Community Center parking lot. I have motion that the St. Anne's Community Festival be declared a municipally significant event. And further, that there is no objection to the proposed extended licensed area. And further, that the request for the use of the parking lot at the Joe Thornton Community Center for parking of recreational vehicles and travel vehicles by workers be referred to the Parks Recreation and Property Management Department. I move by Counsel Clark, seconded by Counsel Kohler.
Questions or comments? Seeing that, all in favor? Any opposed? Carry.
Next item is a, a letter received from Mark Saint Martin of Manitoba Street requesting restriction of parking areas in the laneway north of Talbot Street. For this, your worship, I do have a motion that the letter requesting the restriction of parking areas in the laneway north of Talbot Street East Manitoba be referred to the Environmental Services Department for a report. I move by Counsel Peters. Second by Counsel Wookiee.
Questions or comments? Counsel Peters?
Thanks, your worship. I, I'd be interested, be interested to hear this report come back. But to my understanding is, is this laneway is not all owned and owned by the city. A lot of, it's only a small portion, so I, I just, I, I don't know whether we have the ability to monitor what happens on, on private property, but I trust that'll be in the report.
Yep. Further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carry.
Our next item is a copy of a resolution addressed to the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing from the Town of Essex regarding the tax classification of short-term rental units. And the next item following is also a copy of a resolution from the Town of Essex regarding the reinstatement of legislation allowing municipalities to apply for and retain surplus proceeds from tax sales. The next item is a resolution received from the City of Cambridge regarding barriers for women in politics. The next item is a copy of a resolution from the Town of Petrolia regarding support for a resolution that election Ontario, elections Ontario produce the highest quality permanent register of electors. Next item is a letter received from the Association of Ontario Road Supervisors regarding the imposition of locate charges by Enbridge Gas on municipalities. The next item is a letter received from the Catfish Creek Conservation Authority regarding the authority's programs and services guide and providing a progress report to the Ministry of the Environment, Conservation and Parks regarding the implementation of a transition plan under Ontario Regulation six-eighty-seven slash twenty-one. And next item is a letter received from the Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry regarding amendments to Ontario Regulation one-sixty-one slash seventeen under the Public Lands Act relating to the use of floating accommodations. The next item is a letter received from the Ontario Attorney General regarding the Modernization of Provincial Offenses Act Courts. And the last item appearing under petitions is a letter received from the Ministry for Seniors and Accessibility regarding the twenty-twenty-three Senior of the Year Award. Nominations can be found on the ministry's website. That concludes the items under petitions, your worship.
Okay. If, if, I know we're against the clock here. We're to be in a public meeting as of now, but can we finish unfinished and new business? And then come back after and do bylaws?
Certainly. Any items of unfinished or new business from the members?
I have a few new business items. One is, you know, certainly a thank you to the DDB and, and the Easter Bunny visiting downtown during a construction zone and, and a beautiful Easter weekend. A huge thank you to the Kinsmen and their Easter egg hunt in Pinafore Park. It was a crowded event, and many children were, were amazing their parents at how quickly they could pick stuff up if they were in a park. Anyway, it's a joke. And then also a reminder that we have our strategic plan still going on. Please visit the website of, of St. Thomas dot C A. And right on the front of it is how to participate in the strategic plan, giving this council and, and the municipality your views on what needs to be added to the strategic plan. And as Counselor Peters mentioned earlier, Earth Day is coming up on April twenty-second. There is a couple of very large community cleanups happening through the month of April, and we were, we, the, from the mayor's office point of view, we'll extend that well into May, depending on weather in April. So please, visit our St. Thomas dot C A website and visit the mayor's office for details on how to get garbage bags and gloves and all the things you'll need for your community pickup. And please, with your business and your, and your families, take some time on Earth Day. Twenty-minute challenge to just get out there and clean the area where you live. If it's a business, if it's, if it's your neighborhood or work together. But we'll have lots more reminders of Earth Day coming up on, in April, and certainly community cleanups following that. Any other new business? Seeing none?
Your worship, if you wish, we may now just recess this meeting and move into the public meeting.
If it, yeah, let me know when we're there. That'd be a good. For those watching at home or watching on Rogers, we're going into a public meeting now on on some planning, Planning Act issues. Because it was scheduled for six o'clock. When it finishes, we'll go back into the open session to finish the bylaw portion. And I know we have a closed session in tonight's agenda also. But for now, we'll go into a public meeting. Am I ready? Okay. I'll call the public meeting to order and advise the public the following. The public meeting is required under the Planning Act to afford any person an opportunity to make representation with respect to the proposed official plan and zoning bylaw amendment to implement staff-initiated housekeeping matters related to the additional dwelling units and lot area controls. Before we begin, begin, the members of the public are advised that if a person or public body does not make oral submissions at a public meeting or make written submissions to the Corporation of the City of St. Thomas before the bylaws are passed, a person or public body is not entitled to appeal the decision of the council and the Corporation of the City of St. Thomas to the Ontario Land Tribunal. Further, if a person or public body does not make oral submissions at the public meeting or make written submissions to the Corporation of the City of St. Thomas before the bylaws are passed, the person or public body may not be added as a party to the hearing in the appeal of the Ontario Land Tribunal unless, in the opinion of the tribunal, there are reasonable grounds to do so. Those wanting to be notified of the council's decision should email customerservice@customerservice@stthomas.ca and provide their name and address. Those who do not have access to a computer and wish to be notified should call customerservice at five-one-nine-six-three-one-one-six-eight-zero extension zero and provide the same information. Do any of the members of council have a disclosure of interest concerning any of the matters on this agenda? Seeing none, I will ask the clerk, what method of notice and when was the notice given to the public for this meeting?
Your worship, your worship, notice was provided through the St. Thomas Times Journal on Friday, March the seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three.
Okay, I will now introduce our manager of planning services, Jim McCombe, in person, live and in person tonight, that's incredible, who will provide the background information on the proposal and present the draft bylaws. Mr. McCombe?
Thank you, your worship. And I must say, it is nice to finally be back in the council chambers doing these public meetings, so I appreciate the opportunity. We have a couple of amendments in front of council tonight. They are housekeeping amendments, really. The first of which is the official plan and zoning bylaw amendment dealing with the number of additional dwelling units that can be permitted on a property. So the bylaw and the official plan already contain policies and regulations with respect to that, but through Bill twenty-three, the province mandated that the number of units has to be increased from two to three. And so all these amendments do is they simply delete and replace the subsections that deal with the number of units. So we've drafted amendments in that regard. First, we'll be dealing with the the official plan amendment. It'll be official plan amendment number one-hundred-and-six. The introductory statement states that all this part of the document, entitled Part B, the amendment, constitutes amendment number one-oh-six to the official plan. Under the details of the amendment, it states that the section five-point-one residential policy, the official plan, is amended by deleting subsection five-one-three-seven-one and adding, adding the following new subsection in its place. I'm just going to read through this mainly for the benefit, the older council members have seen this before when we put the original amendments in. But for the benefit of the new members in the public who may be watching, I'll just read through these subsections. So five-one-three-seven-one deals with additional dwelling units and states that additional dwelling units. So five one three seven one deals with additional uh, dwelling units and states that additional residential units are are separate and complete dwelling units that are created within a single detached semi-detached or row house, regardless of whether the physical alteration of the house is required to create a maximum of three residential units on a lot. The following policies will apply to the development of second residential units. A, additional residential units are permitted in a detached house, semi-detached house or row house and in a building or structure ancillary to a detached house, semi-detached house or row house. B, the lands on which the additional dwelling unit is to be created or zoned to permit residential use other than as an ancillary use. And C, an amendment to the conference's zoning bylaw be implemented to put into effect the policies of the subsection. Part D states that the additional dwelling unit can be independently serviced with full municipal sanitary sewage, storm sewage and pipe water services. Part E states that development of an additional residential dwelling unit will be subject to the following criteria. I, the additional dwelling unit shall not change the general characteristics of a single detached semi-detached or row house structure. And I I, the additional dwelling unit will comply with the Ontario Building Code and the Fire Code. Part F states that additional dwelling units may be implemented on a lot in the following options, and these options are uh, as listed in the Planning Act. So under I, two residential units in a detached house, semi-detached house or townhouse on a residential lot, if all buildings and structures ancillary to the detached house, semi-detached house or townhouse cumulatively contain no more than one residential unit. Under I I, the three residential units in a detached house, semi-detached house or townhouse on a residential lot, if no building or structure ancillary to the detached house, semi-detached house or townhouse contains any residential units. Or I I I, one residential unit in a building or structure ancillary to a detached house, semi-detached house or townhouse on a residential lot. If the detached house, semi-detached house or townhouse contains no more than two residential units and no other building or structure ancillary to the detached house, semi-detached house or townhouse contains any residential units. The implementation and interpretation of this amendment will be in accordance with the respective policies of the City of Saint Thomas official plan. And there is a draft bylaw amendment to go with these changes. It starts off in part one by saying that the bylaw fifty dash eighty-eight is amended, as amended, is further amended by deleting paragraph four two eleven-two and replacing with the following new paragraph. Also numbered four two eleven-two states that a maximum of two residential or two additional dwelling units shall be permitted per lot as follows. And I to save a little bit of time, I'm not going to read through each one of these because they're the exact same as the policies in the official plan. There is a second amendment to the bylaw, though it is before council tonight, and this is the ones being recommended by staff. It is very similar to provisions we put into the bylaw to deal with site-specific areas like the power center. And this deals when properties or developments such as the power center get further subdivided later on. This paragraph essentially says that the the zoning regulations that apply to the site overall will continue to apply even though they do perhaps subdivide some of the parcels for various reasons. So it states that uh, bylaw fifty dash eighty-eight, as amended, is further amended by adding to subsection four of the general provisions, the following subsection. It's going to be numbered four point one point eighteen, entitled Existing Uses Continued. And states that where the development of any land is approved under subsection forty-one of the Planning Act and pursuant to a consent subsequently given under section forty fifty-three of the Act or pursuant to an approval or exemption subsequently given under section fifty of the Condominium Act. Any part of the land is conveyed or otherwise dealt with, the regulations of this bylaw are hereby deemed to apply to the land as a whole and to any building or structure thereon in the same manner and to the same extent as if the consent, approval or exception or exemption was not given so long as it can the land and any building or structure thereon are used and continue to be used for the purpose for which the development was approved. And like I said, we've already applied similar provisions in other uh, site-specific areas like the power center as an example. We also did this in the uh, Elgin Center when the hotel was severed off. So those are the drafts of uh, both amendments, uh, the official plan amendment and the the two uh, zoning bylaw amendments, your worship, if there are any questions.
Okay, but. Uh, first, amendment clerk, have we received any written submissions on the proposed changes?
Your worship, we have received no written submissions.
Okay. And now I will ask if any member of council has questions. Please raise your hand. Councillor Clark, I saw you first.
Thank you. I was just wondering if you could speak to um, four point one point one eight, the existing uses continued. Um, just maybe talk a little bit about the advantages and why we're doing that.
Mr. McCombe?
Thank you, your worship. Three to councillor Clark. Um, I guess the best example I can give is, we apply something very similar to the power center. I've mentioned that. The power center was developed overall as a comprehensive site. But then as the various tenants started to move in, being Walmart, the superstore and Canadian Tire, they purchased their own prop, their own parts of that property. But there's provisions in the zoning for that, that, for example, the parking that apply to the site as a whole over overall. So to avoid a situation where you get into a conflict where the the one tenant, say, buys their own piece of property, but now there's a parking requirement. It says you have to meet that on their smaller property, they'd never be able to do it. So this basically says those requirements are going to still remain to to all the overall property, almost like a campus, if I could put it that way.
Councillor Peters?
Thanks, your worship. Um, I've been, was honestly disappointed to hear that we were no written communications because uh, these amendments, albeit uh, minor in a way, um, are significant. Um, the this has the ability to radically change neighborhoods um, of of neighborhood of single-family homes. Uh, now, um, you could see three houses on the, three units on each lot. And as long as they can meet those provisions, and I I don't think, and this is where I come back to a good, I think we're going to need a good communications plan because I don't want to wear this. Because you know, the moment somebody goes and makes the application to convert their garage and add a a new unit in their backyard, you know who they're coming to. And it's going to be to us. Um, I I have a few questions. So with these new additional units that are going to be allowed, are these units going to be eligible for C I P funding? So we're going to subsidize these?
Mr. McCombe? Or or Mister?
Your worship, I defer to Mr. Palm Billy knows more about the C I P program.
Each one would have to be evaluated on a case-by-case basis. Um, anybody can apply for C I P funding and 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 grants. Um, and they are subject to the committee approving them and council approval. So it it's a difficult one to def- because it all depends on too where it's going to be applied for in the city. So.
All right, well, I'll I'll look forward to hearing that. Um, did I hear correctly, uh, your worship, uh, through to Jim or Lou? So that if an existing house has a s- has its sewer and water services and I'm converting my garage and I'm building a new unit in my backyard, a new separate service, so two new sewer services and two new water services. Uh, yeah, I get to be, I start to get concerned about downstream capacity that some of these older residential areas, if we're suddenly infilling three units, three units, three units. Um, do we have the servicing ability? But my my specific question is, did I hear that right, that each of these units is going to require its own services, not shared services?
Your worship, three to councillor Peters. Uh, what the policies say is that they have to be connected to municipal services. And I believe the way this has been implemented and Mr. Bachman may be able to correct me if I'm wrong, but it hasn't been a new cut to the original services in the road, but it's been done through the existing connection that's there.
Correct.
Yeah.
So do we know then that a, the six-inch tile that served my old home at thirty-three Jacomsey Street and my mother had problems with it, with one youth service, one house using it. So now we're going to add two more services into it. Um, I I'm just concerned that some of this, these legislative changes have not been thought through and built twenty-three of the infrastructure upgrades. It's more of a comment than anything, but I it 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 flags me and it concerns me. Um, having dealt with, uh, your worship, another question is, how are we going to ensure, um, uh, is this, will this all be done at the building permit stage? Because I start to think about not just the setbacks, but dealing with a, an addition of a of a garage and a pool into a backyard in a certain part of the city. Um, how all of a sudden that decision has now impacted a whole bunch of other houses that they didn't bargain for? How do, how are we going to make sure that intensification of a property? How are we going to ensure that it's not having that negative or detrimental impact on the rest of the neighborhood?
Mr. McCombe?
Thank you, your worship. Through you to councillor Peters. Um, council mayor called when we did the original set of regulations for these. This amendment is only dealing with those provisions that deal with the number of units, but there are other provisions in the bylaw that we put in place in an attempt to make sure that there isn't significant impact to surrounding neighbors. So we's uh, put specific setbacks for additional dwelling units themselves. But we've also regulated the height to no more than four meters so that you don't have a big two-story uh, additional dwelling in it overlooking the rear yard areas of the neighboring yards. So there are other regulations that have been put in place. Uh, we've also limited the floor area so that they have to be clearly smaller than the original house itself. So they can't, you can't put like three units in there that each one is as big as that original house.
Further questions or comments? Okay, uh, I think we'll open it to the public if there's anybody from the public online. Are we able to see participants? Sorry, attendees. If there is anyone there from the public who would like to make comment, this is your opportunity to do so. You can raise your hand using the raised hand button, or you may, uh.
If we could just switch to the attendees list, please.
Okay, so of the member, of the people, of the folks from the public who are on this list, is there anyone who would like to uh, make comment? If you would, please use your raised hand function. If you've called into the meeting, please press star nine, uh, and the questions will be taken in order of those uh, first. If you have a question, please, as you come on, please let us know your name and address for the clerk's record. I'll ask one more time, is there anyone from the public who would like to make comment? I see a hand, I saw. Okay, I no longer see a hand. Uh, so raise, use your raised hand function, or I now see Ethel, still a penitent here. You have your hand raised. When we unmute you, please ask your question.
Thank you. Um, I'm uh, just wondering in the area that uh, councillor Peters is asking about, I'm thinking it's in an older section, but I'm thinking this is a great invitation to anyone on Centennial Area that would like to make a granny flat or a disabled flat in their backyard. It sounds to me like a good thing.
Thank you, Ethel. That I think is the purpose of this. Mr. McCombe, do you want, but answer to that?
Thank you, worship. Yes, certainly, this was one of the intents or the principal intent of the provincial government when they uh, made these changes is to encourage more affordable housing. The only other comment I would have is that there are many uh, of the zones, residential zones here in the city from the R three, R three A, R four um, that already have permitted what we used to call converted dwellings. So you could add more dwelling units to an existing uh, single detached house. So we've had this for a while, but this is form formalizing this under the uh, you know, the direction of the of the province.
Okay, further questions or comments from any of our participants, mem- uh, members of the public or from council? One more try. Any further questions, comments from members of council or from the members of the public? I will suggest now that everybody's been given fair opportunity for for to express their views. And if there are no further questions, please be advised that any person wishing further information on the actions of council regarding the passing of a bylaw for the proposed amendments, they should email customer service at customer service at Saint Thomas dot C A and provide their name and address. Or those that do not have a computer and wish to be notified should call customer service at five one nine six three one one six eight zero extension zero and provide the same information. The public meeting is now concluded. Thank you, Mr. McCombe. We will now return to open meeting.
Thank you, your worship. Um, if we could reconvene, we'll now be in the bylaws area. I have a motion that leave be granted to bring in the bylaws. Moved by councillor Baldwin Sands, seconded by councillor Clark.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? That's carried.
I have motion by councillor Baldwin Sands, seconded by councillor Clark, that the bylaws be now read a first time, referred to council and committee of the whole and read a second time.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? That's carried.
First item, please.
First bylaws, a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council meeting held on the eleventh day of April twenty twenty-three.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's carried. Next item, please.
Second bylaws, a bylaw to delegate certain authority relating to the industrial development project, and that is to the Executive Director of Industrial Development.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's carried. Next bylaw, please.
Third bylaws, a bylaw to authorize mayor clerk to execute and affix the seal of corporation to a certain agreement between the city and London District Catholic School Board. This relates to the site plan uh, file for eighty-four Park Avenue, a school addition.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's carried. Next bylaw, please.
Fourth and final bylaws, a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute and affix the seal of corporation to a certain agreement between the city and Smart A M S Inc. This relates to a hangar expansion amending agreement.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's carried. Your worship, I, your worship, I rise and report the successful passing of the four bylaws.
Thank you.
I have motion by councillor Baldwin Sands, seconded by councillor Clark, that the report of council and committee of the whole on the four bylaws be received and adopted, the same be read a third time and gross, signed by the mayor and clerk, sealed and numbered.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? That's carried.
Next order of business is public notice. Uh, for the two items on the agenda, notice has been provided through this agenda of the reports that were previously discussed uh, during the council meeting. No notices of motion this evening. Uh, however, there is a need to move into closed session. I have a motion that this meeting be closed to deal with a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land, a proposed or pending disposition of land and a personal matter about an identifiable individual. Moved by councillor McCauley, seconded by councillor Wookiee.
Before I ask for questions or comments, I'll remind the folks at home, we're about to move into a closed session. We will rise from that closed session only to adjourn our meeting or to pass what was done in the closed session. And so we will, uh, thank you for joining us tonight. Enjoy the rest of your evening and we'll see you next week. Questions or comments on a German or are on, yes, on moving to closed session? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carry.